And appreciate a full audience this evening. I know we have several proclamations and a full house from Rocky Mountain High School. Thank you for being here. First item on the agenda is the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Byrd?
Here.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Councilmember Zeremba?
Here.
And Mayor DeViert is absent.
And if you'd all rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's doing this?
Somebody self-bomb really close to my microphone.
I think it was the janitor.
No, myself.
I don't know what's happening there, but we'll move on with the community invocation. This evening will be led by Troy Drake, pastor from the Calvary Chapel in Meridian. Thank you Troy for being here.
Let's pray. Lord God in heaven, we just are so thankful. God, I want to express our gratitude. We have everybody here for this great country that we live in. Lord, we have freedom to choose where we live and where we work and we can pursue our dreams here, Lord, that we can worship you or not worship you in freedom, God. And so I just want to thank you for that. And we also, Lord, just want to express our gratitude for these people who serve you, Lord, with their time and their efforts and they care about our city. And so we just pray, God, that you give them much grace, Lord, for doing that. And, God, we also are just asking for safety in our city. Lord, that you would protect the servants, the fire, the police, the people in our city from danger and harm. We'd have a safe environment to live in here. And lastly, Lord, we just pray for the agenda here tonight and for these folks who are, you know, that you give them wisdom on how to address these items, whether they're small or big. And, God, that your, you know, your grace would be upon all who are here. So we just thank you, Lord, for caring about even the smallest details. And we love you, Lord. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Troy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Byrd.
On the agenda, we need to add under proclamations an item B, Rocky Mountain High School State Champions Day. And on item number 10A, the ordinance number is 15-1645. And with that, I move we accept the amended agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda with appropriate changes. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
If the votes unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is are the proclamations, and there'll be a couple this evening. So the first one. For Huntington's Disease Month and... Representative from... Good evening. Come on up.
My name's Dottie Anderson.
Dottie.
Hi.
Nice to meet you. Well, this evening we're doing a proclamation for Huntington's Disease Awareness Month. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Huntington's disease is a genetic neurodegenerative disease typically affecting people in midlife and places each child of an affected parent at risk of inheriting the gene responsible for causing the disease. And whereas through the Southern Idaho affiliate of the Huntington's Disease Society of America, support and services are provided to families living with Huntington's disease throughout Idaho. And whereas after the onset of Huntington's disease, the average lifespan is 10 to 30 years. And the younger the age of onset, the more rapid and progression of the disease, meaning children who develop the juvenile form of the disease may not live to adulthood. And whereas since 1993, when the gene causing Huntington's disease was discovered, research started to focus on exploring new avenues and approaches to delay the onset of the disease, develop effective therapies slowing the progression of the disease, and to ultimately find a cure for the disease. And whereas, at the present time, there is no effective treatment or cure for Huntington's disease, and it is critical to raise awareness so the advancement of research and support services can continue. Therefore, Mayor DeViert, the City of Meridian proclaims May 2015 as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month in the City of Meridian and calls upon the community to join us at the city in raising awareness for those who in this worthy cause. And this is the proclamation signed by Mayor Tammy.
Thank you.
And thank you for your support and your services to the folks in that community. And if you have a few words, Dottie.
I didn't come prepared to say anything, but I will say that my husband and I live here in Meridian. We lived at 10 Mile and Cherry, and my husband died of Huntington's disease here in 2009. Karen's son has Huntington's disease right now. And we're working hard to bring recognition to this disease in this community. There's quite a number of people that do have it in this area, about 30,000 nationwide. So we have a support group that meets every second Tuesday?
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday. Second Wednesday of the month at Wright Congregational Church downtown at Orchard and Franklin. So we thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your services and the effort. The next proclamation reads as follow. Whereas being an athlete is more than training to excel in sports or to be physically fit. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence, teamwork, and resilience. All traits are needed to succeed on the dance floor, in classroom, and in real life, in our real life world. Whereas the Rocky Mountain Diamond dancers have constantly placed first, second, and third in many categories of dance competitions across the Treasure Valley. And whereas their diligence and teamwork resulted in yet another state title at the 2015 state dance competition, making this the third straight title for the Diamonds. And whereas the capturing of the state title builds school spirit and allows these student athletes to walk the halls of Rocky Mountain with a little extra swagger for the third year in a row. And whereas the leadership, training, and discipline of the, from and of their coaches helped all team members to focus their talents and passions to become a winning team with each dancer making valuable contribution to the victory. Therefore, Mayor Tammy does proclaim May 19, 2015, as Rocky Mountain High School State Competitions Champions Day in the City of Meridian and calls upon the community to join in the congratulations of the Diamond dancers on their remarkable athletic achievement and for representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament. And Trish, would you bring the girls up here so we can all give them a hand? And I'm not sure if you want them all to introduce themselves, but we'd like that. Maybe they'd do a short routine for us. I don't know. And I'm not sure swagger was the right word for a dance team, but...
It's great. It's perfect.
Congratulations for your effort, the time you spent. I know it's hours and hours of very rigorous training and performance practice. So again, congratulations, and you're more than deserving. Three years in a row. That's quite an accomplishment. And we have City of Meridian pins for each and every one of you, so...
Yeah, that's so cool.
So if you would walk by if you wish, dance by would be preferable. They'll give you a pin and appreciate you, Trish. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you very much. Hands are got you. Hands are got you.
Just keep clapping.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take two.
Thank you.
Wear it proud. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
You're a real treadmill.
Somebody else is going to go.
Thank you so much, Michael. I'm having Emily stop dead for...
They bounce.
Let me be the one who drops them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And if we could have another round of applause for these young ladies for good job. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve the consent agenda as published and for the president to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, excuse me, roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zeremba?
Aye.
There were no items removed for the consent agenda, so we'll move into action items. Item 8A, letter, staff letter recommending for approval of the floodplain variance request. David, you can do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council president and council members. Tonight I'm here to discuss a floodplain variance request by the property owner and designer at 47 East Bauer Street. We received and I am in support of a request for variance to the city's flood damage prevention ordinance by the property owner and their designer. And by ordinance, variances are required to be heard and decided by the council, so that's why we're here tonight. I'll do my best to be quick and brief on a technical matter, but if you have questions, certainly feel free to ask. The designer and the owner are here. If they have anything that they want to add or they have questions for you or vice versa as well. For some quick context, the applicant proposes to construct a 1,200 square foot approximately commercial garage for storage of automobile and parts. The elevations and the grades on the property in this area of the floodplain in downtown would require that the building be built about three and a half feet above the current existing ground, which due to the lot dimensions would create quite a restriction on access to the building. It's not necessarily the building, but the access to the building that would be one of the added hardships that would occur and would be one of the added impediments. For that reason, the applicant has worked with us and has offered to what's known as dry floodproof the commercial building. So the building would be built, the floor, excuse me, would be built lower, but the building would still be safe from flooding through what is known as dry floodproofing. Essentially, water wouldn't be able to get into the building. That is really the only change under our ordinance that is being recommended and would allow the building to still comply with the minimum national flood insurance provisions. However, that would allow, within the intent of the ordinance locally, to meet the same achievement that we have of higher restrictions. The variance will only impact the method of construction and we'll verify those through the building permit process as well to ensure that those measures are put in place. And I've reviewed the proposal with the city engineer, and we both feel that it's an appropriate variance request to approve. So with that, if you don't have any questions, or if you do, we recommend that the variance request be approved. And it matters before you.
Any questions?
I have none.
See the applicants here. Do you have any comments? Nope? Okay. Thank you, John. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President.
Joe.
In light of staff's comments, I think there are sufficient findings, unique findings, to approve this. So I would move that we approve the floodplain variance request for 47 East Bauer Street.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 8A. Any discussion? That would require a roll call vote, I believe.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zeremba?
Aye.
Next item is item 8B, public hearing. I'll open a public hearing to consider conveyance to Ada County Highway District of approximately 2,446 square feet of property.
Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, this is a continued item from May 5. We're going to ask that the council continue it for two weeks to your June, is it June 5? No, June 2.
June 2.
June 2 meeting. We haven't received final comment from the Highway District, so at this juncture, we don't know if this transfer is even going to occur. It may not. And we're just waiting for their final report.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue?
Mr. President.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we continue item... B to June 2, 2015.
Second.
And item 8B, all those in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next item?
I was late, but I was in favor.
You're there. We heard you, David. Loud and clear. 8C, a public hearing for vacation on Reflection Ridge subdivision number three. Open a public hearing.
President Roundtree, members of the council. First application before you tonight is a request for a vacation easement. This site is located approximately half mile south of East Victory Road and a half mile west of South Locust Grove in the third phase of Reflection Ridge subdivision. The applicant requests approval to vacate an existing five-foot-wide public utility easement that lies across lots 2 through 5, Block 8, as shown on the right there, in Reflection Ridge subdivision number 3. The easement is a remnant side lot line easement related to a previous property boundary adjustment that relocated the north property boundary line between Lot 1, Block 8, the park lot, Reflection subdivision number 1, and the adjacent future development parcel of Phase 3. The subject easement area was not utilized for any easements during the construction of Reflection Ridge 3, and a new 10-foot-wide public utility easement was granted with the Reflection Ridge subdivision number 3 final plat along the rear lot lines of the impacted lots, approximately 25 to 30 feet south of the original five-foot-wide easement. The applicant has submitted letters from all applicable public utilities, Idaho Power, CenturyLink, Intermountain Gas, and NMID consenting to the proposed relinquishment of easement. Written testimony has been received from Matt Schultz, the applicant's representative, in agreement with the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions council may have.
Questions for staff?
I have none.
Matt, do you have anything you want to say? You drove all the way over here. You might as well.
Matt Schultz, 8421, South 10 Mile, in Meridian, here on behalf of the applicant. It's good to be here. Thanks for the staff's report. It's just a housekeeping item for us. We didn't think it was going to impact any of our homes going into Phase 3, but just in case, we're just getting rid of it. So, thank you.
Very good. Questions for Matt?
I have none.
All right. Mr. Byrd? It's probably, it is a public hearing. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this? That's what I thought. Go ahead, Mr. Byrd.
Mr. President, I move we close the public hearing on VAC 15-004.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on item 8C. All those in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
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 unanimous. Thank you. Next item is item 8D.
Second.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. President.
Approve that.
Mr. President.
It's rookie night. You gotta remember that.
It's party night.
I move we approve VAC 15-004 and include all staff and applicant testimony.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 8C. Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zeremba?
Aye.
All right. I'll open the public hearing on item 8D. So it's Development Agreement Modification for Woodland Springs by Morgan Delamont. Staff?
Thank you, President Roundtree, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for a modification to the existing development agreement for Woodland Springs subdivision. This site is located at 1728 and 1736 East McMillan Road at the northeast corner of North Locust Grove Road and East McMillan Road. And the site is owned CN. This property was annexed in 2007. A development agreement was required as a provision of annexation, which required future development to comply with the conceptual building elevations and materials included in the agreement. The applicant requests approval of a modification to change the architectural design of the future buildings, excuse me, building on lots 3 and 4, Block 1, Woodland Springs subdivision, to the design shown and proposes to remove the requirement for fake timbers and beams to be provided. The arrow here on the picture on your left is a concept site plan. It's only the building right here that the arrow is pointing to that the applicant requests modification of, and that is this building right here. And then, again, this is the existing building in the development agreement. These are the proposed building elevations. Due to the economic changes since 2008, when the development agreement was approved, the applicant states he has not been able to develop the site as planned and wishes to construct a speculative shell with the proposed changes to the elevations that he believes reflect today's development and construction costs equal to what current rents will accommodate. The existing and proposed buildings appear to be approximately the same height and building materials are essentially the same. Stucco, stone accents, and metal standing seam roofing. Faux timbers and beams were originally proposed as a design element, but were not used on the Maverick Building next door and are not proposed to be used on future buildings. The form of the building is different. The original structure incorporated a mix of metal hip roofs and parapets with cornices variety. The proposed building has parapets with cornices at varying heights, metal leaves, canopies over the building entrances and windows, and columns for vertical interest and modulation. And finestration comparable with the original building. Staff has reviewed the proposed changes to the elevations and building materials and found them in substantial compliance with the design standards listed in the UDC. Further, the proposed design and materials are consistent and tie in with the Maverick Building that exists on the Woodland Springs site to the west. Staff will stand for any questions the council may have. No written testimony was received on this application other than the applicant's response in agreement with the staff report.
Comments or questions?
I have none.
Jason, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, is there anybody else?
To see if there's anybody else who wishes to testify at the public hearing. Seeing none. Mr. Byrd.
I move we close the public hearing on MDA 15-004.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on item 8D. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I move we approve MDA 15-004 and include staff comments and applicant written testimony.
Second.
Been seconded to approve the request on item 8D. Roll call, will?
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zeremba?
Aye.
Next three items. I'll open up public hearings for Verona East subdivision and staff.
Thank you, President Roundtree, council. The applications before you next are rezone, a combination preliminary and final plat, and a development agreement modification for Verona East subdivision. This site consists of .62 of an acre of land. It's currently zoned LO, located at 5048 North Cortona Way, northeast of the North 10 Mile and West McMillan Road intersection. In 2003, this property was annexed with an R8 zoning district and included in the Verona subdivision number 2 plat. A conditional use permit was also approved for a planned development, which allowed a land use exception for office uses on this site in an R8 district. A development agreement was required as a provision of annexation. In 2007, the property was rezoned to LO and removed from the existing development agreement and included in a new agreement, which required substantial conformance with the conceptual office elevations submitted with that application. The applicant is requesting a modification to the existing agreement to remove the subject property from the agreement. This will allow two single-family attached homes with four dwelling units to be constructed on the site as proposed here. And that'll develop with two single-family residential attached structures. Staff does not recommend a new development agreement as a provision of the rezone. However, because the existing agreement reflects office uses developing on this site and requires future structures to generally conform to the elevations included in the agreement, staff does recommend the agreement is modified to exclude the subject property. Staff does not believe it's necessary to require a new agreement to govern development of the site as the proposed structures will require certificate of zoning compliance and designer view approval, which will ensure in quality of development. A combined preliminary and final plat is proposed, as shown, consisting of four single-family residential building lots and two common lots on .62 of an acre of land in the proposed R8 district. This is a re-subdivision of Lot 12, Block 10, Verona subdivision number 2. Access is proposed via a common driveway from North Cortona Way, a collector's street. Local street access is not available to this lot. A 20-foot-wide landscaped street buffer is proposed along North Cortona Way with a parkway and detached sidewalk. Because this site is less than five acres in size, open space and site amenities are not required. Conceptual building elevations were submitted, as shown, for future development of this site. Building materials appear to consist of horizontal lap siding with stucco accents. The commission did recommend approval at their public hearing. Gerald Martins testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented, and no written testimony was received. There were no key issues of discussion by the commission, and there are no outstanding issues for council. Staff will stand for any questions council may have.
Questions for council, staff?
I have none.
Seeing none. Jerry, do you have some comments?
Thank you. Real briefly, this is really a down zone.
You can state your name.
Oh, excuse me. My name is Gerald Martins, EHM Engineers. I'm representing Prime Land Development this evening. This is very simple down zone of a small piece of property to allow construction of four residential units, and we concur with staff's recommendations.
Very good. Any questions?
I have none.
No? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing on these three items. Anybody wish to testify? I see none?
Seeing none. Mr. President.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we close the public hearings on RZ 15004, 15001, and 15002.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on items 8, E, F, and G. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve RZ 15004 and to include staff and applicant comments, and that includes doing a modification to the DA. I believe that would be in that one.
Actually, that's G.
It would be in the rezone, wouldn't it? But the modification to the DA, being the...
It's going to be for public hearing.
Yeah, we have a public hearing on the modification of development agreement.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's all right.
Excuse that. I didn't pay attention. I'll restate my motion if the second allow it. I move we approve RZ fifteen oh oh four and include all staff and applicant comment.
Second.
To approve item eight E. Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmembers Zerumba?
Aye.
Next item, eight F.
Mr. President?
Mr. Byrd?
I move we approve PFP fifteen dash oh oh one, include staff and applicant comments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item eight F. Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmembers Zerumba?
Aye.
Item eight G.
Now.
There you go.
Mr. President?
Mr. Byrd?
I move we approve MDA fifteen dash oh oh two, include staff and applicant comments.
Do you want to add anything else to that?
That's it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item eight G. Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmembers Zerumba?
Aye.
I'll now open the public hearings for item eight H and I, AZ fifteen oh two and PP fifteen oh four. Staff?
Counsel, the next applications before you are a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of thirty-nine point seven-six acres of land. It's currently zoned RUT in Ada County, and it's located at four three four five North Linder Road on the west side of Linder, south of West McMillan Road. This site is surrounded by single-family residential properties, zoned R four and R eight, a church zoned LO, and vacant land with a shop across Linder Road to the east, zoned LO. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this site is medium-density residential. The applicant requests annexation and zoning of thirty-nine point seven-six acres of land with an R four zoning district. Staff recommends a development agreement as a provision of annexation. A preliminary plat is proposed as shown, consisting of ninety-nine building lots and twelve common lots on thirty-nine point seven-six acres of land. The property is proposed to develop in four phases, starting at the north boundary as shown on the plat. The gross density for the proposed subdivision is two point four nine dwelling units per acre with an average lot size of eleven thousand four hundred and thirteen square feet. Because the density is under the three to eight dwelling units per acre desired in medium-density residential designated areas, the applicant is requesting a step down in density to low-density residential which allows three or fewer dwelling units per acre as allowed by the comprehensive plan without an amendment to the future land use map. The reason for the lower density is the need for larger lot sizes to accommodate their desired product which incorporates an RV garage attached to some of the dwellings. Access is proposed via one access from Linder Road and three existing stub streets from Bridge Tower Crossing and Water Song Estates subdivisions. The white drain bisects this site. The applicant is requesting council approval of a waiver for the drain to remain open and not be piped. A bridge is proposed for access over the drain. A twenty-five-foot-wide street buffer is required along Linder Road as proposed on the landscape plan. Six-foot-wide parkways are proposed throughout most of the development. A total of five point zero two acres or twelve point six-three percent of the site of qualified open space is proposed with a segment of the city's regional pathway along the white drain and playground equipment as site amenities in accord with UDC standards. The applicant submitted five conceptual sample building elevations for future homes within the development. Building materials appear to consist of a mix of horizontal lap siding and stucco with shake shingle and stone accents. Staff would like to point out, there is a provision in the development agreement that the applicant construct an off-site improvement to the west. There is a segment of the city's multi-use pathway that is missing here. I can't remember how long it is, hundred, hundred and fifty feet, I believe, of pathway. The staff is asking the applicant as a provision of annexation to go in and finish, provided that they can get the consent from the Bridge Tower Crossing Homeowners Association. Summary of the commission public hearing, Becky McKay testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. There were several people that commented as follows: Carolyn Yocum, Wayne Ebell, Adam Simmons, Jeff Bronco, Jim Johns, and Lulette Young. A written testimony was received in response to the staff report from Becky McKay. Key issues of discussion by the commission was the requirement for the applicant to construct the missing section of multi-use pathway off-site in Bridge Tower subdivision, and the commission was in favor of the applicant's request for a waiver to the UDC to leave the white drain open and not require it to be piped. The council, excuse me, the commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation. The only outstanding issue for the council tonight is the applicant's request for a waiver to allow the white drain to remain open. No written testimony has been received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions council may have.
Questions for staff?
I have none.
Mr. President?
David.
Thank you. I like the idea of connecting the pathway with a sort section, but I don't see where it's going on this plat. Is that... The pathway exists in Bridge Tower, but, okay, so I was not seeing that clearly. So there is a pathway that it's going to connect to once they make that connection.
President Roundtree, councilman Zerumba, yes, it will run along the south side of the drain here.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. President? Along the south side, or is that dotted line? Is it along the north side?
No, it's on the south side.
The dotted line is a phasing line.
Yes. Thank you.
Other questions? Becky? Good evening.
Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, ten twenty-nine North Rosario. Good evening, members of the council. I'm representing the Berninger family and Mr. Amix, who have teamed up on this enclave. Yours disappeared. What happened? I don't know. Yours disappeared. Uh-oh. I'll, I'll continue on. Go ahead. This particular site is surrounded by the city limits. The Berninger family has owned it for many, many years. I worked with Bud Berninger when, when we were getting the entitlements and doing our designs on Bridge Tower. Bridge Tower is located to the north, to the west. The LDS Church adjoins our northeast corner. To the south is Water Song, and then to the east is Baldwin Park. Kitty corner to our site at the southeast corner is Sawtooth Middle School. We had a pretty good turnout at our neighborhood meeting. A lot of residents from Bridge Tower, which, who own lots that applied this particular property, and a few of the Water Song residents were definitely interested in what we were proposing. They had some really positive comments which we did incorporate into our design to try to obviously mitigate our impact on their lots. One of those things is obviously matching, you know, similar size, what you would consider like low-density, single-family residential lots, so that this is kind of a seamless transition, which was one of the things that we considered. Secondly, there is an existing stub street located in this particular neighborhood at Bridge Tower. There were multiple concerns about cut-through traffic through their pod or neighborhood to the collector over to the existing Hunter Elementary that's within Bridge Tower. One of the things that we initially proposed was just a pedestrian connection here where the LDS Church currently exists. They do have a public street that is dedicated to ACHD. It's only twenty-seven feet wide, but one of the primary comments from the neighborhood was if, if you're going to connect our stub street, which I said I have no choice but to, we would really appreciate if you would also provide an alternate route that would be more of a direct route up to the collector in the event someone wants to go to Hunter Elementary or some of the commercial that lies within Bridge Tower. So we did change our plan. We took out the micro path. We matched, we matched this with a public street the same width, and then we have ten-foot buffer, landscape buffer lots on each side to kind of shield those adjoining lots. One of the other things was Water Song, some of the residents that live here obviously looked directly into the property. They wanted a perimeter sight obscuring fence. Bridge Tower also asked that we match their perimeter fencing so it looks like this project, you know, just rolls right into theirs. We did agree to that. We have Monument Drive, which is a collector roadway into Baldwin Park. ACHD asked for an alignment to that, which we did, and we will also be extending the stub street from Water Song north. This particular layout, we, in, in looking at Bridge Tower, and obviously we have some fixed points with these stub streets that we're connecting to, we wanted it to be very similar in feel and openness with, you know, heavy landscaping along Linder. We even like brought our landscaping in to kind of create like a little planting area, and so we don't get that linear look as cars drive down the arterial. We have more than the minimum buffer, I believe, on that on Linder Road frontage. We'll have detached walk. Also with the middle school located southeast of us, I did include a pedestrian pathway so that the kids can go southeast. ACHD indicates there is a flashing pedestrian crossing for the school that is at Linder Road for a safe route to schools. One of the other things that we looked at was Bridge Tower's multi-use pathway, which is on your pathway plan, is on the south side of the drain. It stops one hundred and fifteen feet short of our boundary. And I went back to my old files. It was done in two thousand and four, and the reason that it stopped short is because Settlers Maintenance Road was originally on the north side of the Settlers Drain. We convinced settlers to go with a fourteen-foot-wide multi-use pathway. It would also be a combination vehicle maintenance access, so it was a dual purpose, and it was vehicle rated. Now, when they got to the Berniger property, they had to go back to the north side to continue to drive all the way out to Linder Road. And so, we weren't sure, since Mr. Berniger's property was still in agricultural production, was the pathway going to go north? Was it going to go south? And my recollection was eleven years ago that that's why we stopped short. Now, what the city Public Works Department is pretty, they're sticklers for making sure that either one, you've made the improvement as proposed, and if anything that you could not construct, then you provide a cash, like a trust fund for that improvement. I haven't been able to find any paperwork, but I would like Public Works to look at the record and see if there by chance was something there. Our primary concern, it is not the cost of extending the pathway another hundred and fifteen feet. We agree that the multi-use pathway should seamlessly continue south. Our concern is, one, dealing with the Bridge Tower Homeowners Association, getting their permission, and obviously if there's grass and sprinklers, there could be additional costs beyond just the pathway. I guess I ask the council to have the Parks Department work with us to help us, one, communicate to Bridge Tower's HOA and to facilitate this, because we don't have the right to go onto their property and change anything. And if they say no, I'm, I'm stuck. And I think the pathway was intended to continue to Linder. Water Song has installed their portion of the pathway, so we're connecting two segments of existing ten-foot multi-use pathway. So you'll have it for that full mile. It's going to be, it's going to be great. One of the other things we wanted to do was we put a micro path connecting these two blocks so the kids can come up through the stub street in Bridge Tower, go around that loop, and then there's a pedestrian pathway that exits to the west that they can go over to Hunter Elementary. So, we're creating pathways and shortcuts for the kids to both the elementary and to the middle school. So I think as far as pedestrian connections are concerned, this is as good as it gets. We'll have detached sidewalks throughout the project with a six-foot landscape buffer, a median at our entrance. The only place we do not have detached walks is this stretch right through here, and that's because we had extreme difficulty trying to fit the public street in that sliver kind of area based on the configuration of the existing stub street. So we ended up going with a fifty-foot right-of-way and a twenty-nine-foot section, restricted parking on one side, and attached walks, but everywhere else there will be detached. Our primary open space is located right there. We'll have playground equipment. Obviously, when we get into our final design for first phase, we'll look at, you know, exactly what those amenities are going to look like, but we meet our two required amenities. One of the things that the staff has brought up is the frontage on that particular lot there. The staff has indicated the R four zone that we're requesting, and the reason we're requesting the R four is because we don't have any lots that are less than eight thousand square feet. Our average lot size is, I think, about eleven thousand four hundred square feet. So, we, we wanted, the staff asked us to provide some variety of lot sizes, so we have some seventy-foot lots south of the drain, which is consistent with the R eight in Water Song, but everything north of the drain are the larger lots with one thirty, one forty, one fifty-foot depths and, and eighty up to a hundred feet wide. This particular frontage here, the staff says, you know, we want it to be sixty. I guess I asked the council to consider the difficulty we have in taking, whoops, in taking this public street, and then we're trying to turn it as quickly as possible. So they're giving us leniency on a fifty-three-foot frontage for that pie lot right smack at the corner, but on lot twenty-eight that adjoins it, they're saying that has to be sixty. I have looked at all those lots, and I don't have seven feet to, to widen it out. It may have fifty-three feet of frontage, but it's, it's pieing out pretty fast. So, these are the type of homes that my client has built in Alpine Point subdivision, he and his builder team. So I wanted to bring some, you know, pictures. These are obviously the homes, larger homes that would be going on the larger lots. We did provide pictures to the staff, elevations of some new homes that they're working on. This is going to be obviously compatible, consistent with Bridge Tower. It's a great project. The property's been there, you know, just sitting in ag production, and the fact that they gravity irrigate it has adversely affected some of the adjoining lots in Bridge Tower. I've spoken to some of the residents, and they have had some issues with groundwater coming into their crawl space during the irrigation season. We have dug multiple test holes. We do have about fifteen years' worth of data, and so, once this goes out of agricultural production, there's no doubt that that groundwater will stabilize and drop. We've had hydrologists analyze it, and they grafted it, made predictions, and they were basically right on. right on. And so as far as our drainage facilities, our intent is we will not be doing ponds. We're going to be doing storm tech system, which is going to be similar to what we just designed and installed in Isola Creek or Bolano Creek over off Ten Mile for Coleman Homes. They're subsurface. They, we don't have problems with those in high groundwater areas. They're more money, but then it makes all of our open space usable because we're not using ponds. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Becky?
I have none. Mr. President.
Mr. Zarimba.
Thank you. Very thorough and informative, as always. If you're able to make that off-site connection, this is exactly where I wanted to look, will you be able to convince Settlers Irrigation to make their maintenance road on the pathway and abandon their northside maintenance road? Does that give you more space? Or is it still an easement for them?
Councilman Zarimba, I've talked to Mac Myers when we did Bridge Tower. Nathan Draper was the director. Now it's Mac Myers. Mac Myers said that they have now determined that Nampa Meridian has control of the drain, however, settlers maintained it. Well, when I talked to Mr. Young, Harry Young, who was the, who owned Bridge Tower, I think he said he was there over 50 years, he said that, to his knowledge, Settlers Irrigation District had never cleaned the drain once. So I'll have to work with both of those agencies in order to convince them to go with a multi-use combo path like Bridge Tower has. Or if Mac is insistent on the phone, he said something about we need access to both sides. Well, obviously, access to one side at Bridge Tower has functioned well over the past, what, 14 years? So, you know, we can explore that, but I'm always subject to what they'll allow me to do. If the council has a suggestion, I can sure pass that on.
I can say I hope it works.
Okay.
It'd be better coming from you than from anybody else. I mean, it makes sense to make it one, one common use pathway.
Questions?
I have none.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
Becky, if I understood you correctly, you're willing and comfortable to complete that connection for the pathway?
Yes, sir.
Off-site, assuming that they get consent. Hopefully, that's right away.
Yes, sir.
But the cost of that would be borne by the applicant.
I'm asking for help from Parks Department.
Parks to help facilitate.
And, you know, if it requires relocation of irrigation facilities, you know, I don't, I'm just not sure exactly what I'm, you know, we're going to face. I don't know what they have in there.
To be clear, though, I heard you say facilitate, meaning try to assist the HOA to understand the community benefit to their community connecting the pathway, not facilitate by funding any of the improvements. Correct?
Yeah. You want me to say a few words on that?
Sure.
You have to give your name and address.
President, council members. Todd Amick, 4202 North Far Light Way, Boise. I'm the developer on this. We absolutely have no problem continuing a path for the children. We more than want that to be there. The concerns I have as a developer is just going in there, both liability sake and unknowing what's going on there with the ground, with sprinklers and so forth that we've talked about. As far as the financial part of it, we'd be more than happy to put the path in, but I've just got to make sure, I've got to go on someone else's property, dig up stuff, replace it, and I'm concerned about the liability. I'm concerned about any other issues we might run in there. So I need to get Bridge Tower's approval. As far as Settlers Irrigation goes, I think we've got a solution for them, so that's kind of what we're looking at.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't miscommunication on who's funding it. It sounded like you were willing to pay the price to accomplish it and asking the city to help facilitate those meetings.
Yes.
And make arrangements, but not to fund any of the construction. Correct?
Correct.
Unless there's trust fund money there.
Right. If we can get the trust fund money, if there is anything existing at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I only bring this up because on Isola Creek, we did a micro path to Bridge Tower, and the HOA would not allow us to take down their fence, to allow people to walk down their commercial drive or bike over. So we were kind of disappointed, and the city staff said, well, your condition reads that, you know, you have to connect. I said, well, we did. I can't make them take down their fence. I mean, and so then your staff did intervene, talked to Bridge Tower's HOA. They gave them the same answer they gave my developer. No.
Other questions?
I have none.
Mr. President, this might not be a question for you. Maybe it's for, for Bill or planning. Do we have, and this would be an example, when Bridge Tower is approved, that one of those conditions of approval would be that when this opportunity connects a pathway comes in the future, that you're consenting now to that future extension? You may not know if that even exists. Do we ever do that? Or is that worth looking into to see if that was one of the conditions of approval?
Yeah.
Because we anticipated it connecting.
Mr. President, members of the council, I mean, we'd have to look at the development agreement for Bridge Tower. There probably is something like that and requiring that connection, but I don't know.
Councilwoman Burton, I believe there was a requirement for it to be constructed to the boundary. Now, how we provided the easement, when I look at their recorded plat, there isn't an easement there, but I, they were doing separate pathway easement documents, so there may be something, like I said, we've archived our Bridge Tower 10 file, and so I'm trying to, you know, figure out why we did what we did and what was provided. And I haven't been able to get a complete picture.
Mr. President, this, this one is from way back before the UDC, and there were, are things that have changed since then. And I'm not sure that I remember Bridge Tower specifically, but there were several cases where a development that occurred next to land that was going to continue to be in ag use, and maybe they had horses and cows and stuff. It was the neighbor that asked to have the fence continue across the pathway until such time that they developed. So I remember that happening in several different places around the city. I don't remember if that was specifically here. But if, if the property on the end of that pathway remained with animals, that neighbor asked to have the fence continue, fence close off that pathway. So it would have been the intent of the city to have that fence removed when the next section was, was made. So I'm, I'm sure some of those slipped through the cracks, but I, I can see how it happened. The neighbor asked for it.
President.
Mr. Burton.
I, I think the reason they weren't required, but knowing who brought that Bridge Tower through, I, I have to think that in the development agreement or someplace, there is a statement or that they would finish that pathway to the deal. I mean, that's, I hate to say it, Beck, but you've never done, you've always went out to the property line, and so I just, I know Bridge Tower. I remember, and, but we couldn't do it because of the settlers. And, but I, I'm, I'm not too sure. You're not right that there isn't some kind of a trust setting out there for, to finish that up.
Yeah. Councilwoman Burton, we did multiple trust funds at Bridge Tower where we had ag property that, that we, we couldn't install certain improvements. So the city said, in lieu of that, the code requires it, you have to provide us cash trust. Yeah.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Is a public hearing on this item? Are these three, these two items, does anybody wish to provide additional testimony? Seeing none?
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
I move to close AZ 15-002 and PP 15-004.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close items 8H and I. Roll call. No, we don't need a roll call for that. All is in favor, signify by the board.
All right.
Opposed? Item 8H.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
I move to approve AZ 15-002. And with the developer, working with the Parks Department, to get the permission from the homeowners association of Bridge Tower to complete that, and also for the, the city planning to look into the Bridge Tower DA and see if there was any trusts to help finance And with that, I would add that to include all staff and applicant comment.
Any discussion? I'd point out, at what point do we discuss the waiver variance for tiling the drain?
That's right now.
Now or in the preliminary plat? Now, if, now, so.
Okay. Mr. President, redo it. Second agree?
Yes, second agree.
And I would include in my motion that we allow white grain to be untiled.
Second agree. Okay. You heard the motion? You're ready to discuss? Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Very good. Next item is item 8I, preliminary plat.
Mr. President, I move to approve PP 15-004 and to include all staff and applicant comment.
Second.
Mr. President.
Discussion.
Comment. Do we need to include a discussion on the one lot where the frontage is not quite wide enough? Approval of that variance or?
That, that.
That's a preliminary plat subject.
That's the preliminary plat, but it don't, would that included in the applicant's comment?
Yes.
That would be, would that have to be a separate item come through as a variance, Bill? The lot's not quite big enough. It is in the back, but not at the front.
Mr. President, members of the council, I mean, I think you can approve it with, with the findings that are, been already presented.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, but I, with the applicant and, and staff comments.
Over to you.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Item 8I with the reference to reducing the frontage on the one lot to accommodate the curvature in the road. All, roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
President, may I clarify that motion, please? Was it your intent, Councilwoman Burd, to approve the street frontage that the applicant had shown on the plat or for them to modify it in accord with UDC standards? Or to provide a common driveway?
To, to show what's on there. The, I think it was 50 feet instead of 60, but it was 60 in the back. Am I not right?
No.
Yeah, our street frontage is majored up.
A common driveway may never works. I mean, you, you have lots of problems with a common driveway. That's, that was what the motion intended.
Your intent was as shown on the preliminary plat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody understand that, what you wrote?
Okay.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zarimba.
Aye.
Oh, I understand. Becky and Mr. Amick, I just wanted to comment on, on your plan and, and the way you've incorporated this large parcel, not really an infill, but a large parcel into our community, and taken into consideration what's gone on around you. And, and in my opinion, you've done an excellent job of accommodating the desires we have in terms of interconnectability of neighborhoods and compatibility. And I, I think you've just done an excellent job. Thank you for doing that.
You bet.
No need.
Next item is, I'll open the public hearings on item 8JKNL for Hamlin Village subdivision.
Thank you, council president, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is the Hamlin Village subdivision development. It currently consists of .50 acres of land, and it's zoned R15 within the city. It's located at 603 West Pine Avenue here. So actually, this lot is double frontage on Pine and also Idaho Street. Surrounding this development is primarily fourplexes or multifamily development along the boundary, except for the single-family home that is located here on the northeast corner of the site. But this property is also zoned R15 within the city, so everything contiguous with this property is currently zoned R15 within the city. And the comprehensive plan for this property is designated high-density residential. The applicant is here tonight to discuss rezoning this property from the R15 zoning district to the R40 zone in order to accommodate the proposed density of the development before you this evening. Within the R15 zoning district, the maximum density allowed in that district is 15 dwelling units to the acre. The project that the applicant will be discussing with you this evening consists of 17.8 dwelling units to the acres, which staff finds is consistent with the high-density residential con-plan designation and also the requested R40 zoning designation. In conjunction with the rezone, the applicant is also proposing to plat this property with two residential lots, or two multifamily lots, and one common lot to accommodate the two fourplex units. You can see here, this is the preliminary plat to the left, and then the proposed final plat as well. So you'll see a landscape buffer along Pine, and then one buildable, buildable lot, and then the other buildable lot here, Lot 1 and Block 2. Access to this development will be provided from Idaho Street here. The director has approved an alternative compliance request for this development to allow for a reduced landscape buffer along Pine Avenue. Typically, along Pine Street, we would require a 25-foot-wide landscape buffer, but in order to accommodate the required parking and provide additional common open space within the multifamily development, the applicant has received a director approval to reduce the landscape buffer width from 25 feet down to 15 feet along Pine Avenue here. One other item, because of this rezone and because majority of this property surrounding this development is zoned R15, and the applicant is stepping up to the R40 zone, staff is not recommending a development agreement with the rezone of the property. The main factors, again, would be the existing, the surrounding properties are R15. If the applicant didn't move forward with the development tonight, anyone else that wanted to develop multifamily on this site would have to go through the conditional use permit, even in the R15 zone, and it's also required in the R40 zone. So really, there aren't any compatibility issues here. Both the R15 zoning and R40 zone would require a conditional use permit to establish that The applicant has also submitted a concurrent conditional use permit, again, to develop eight multifamily units, each contained within two fourplex structures here. Parking requirements for this development would be 16 total, eight of which would be covered, again, with access coming off of Idaho Street. The applicant, application included two alternative compliance requests, the one I mentioned to you as far as a reduced buffer along Pine, but the applicant also received alternative compliance to give them some relief from the dimensional standards of the parking lot and also the perimeter landscaping around that parking lot, given the site constraints of this parcel because it's very narrow. The applicant can't, wasn't able to meet the entire ordinance as far as the parking lot dimension, so the director did grant approval of some reduced landscape buffers along the north, excuse me, along the west and the east, and then also some, eight of the the parking stalls will be designed as compact parking stalls in order to accommodate the required parking by the ordinance. The benefit of that, as I mentioned to you, by having a reduced buffer along the arterial, it gets the buildings closer to the street, but it also allows the applicant to provide approximately three thousand two hundred and seventy-nine square feet of open space interior to the site for the multifamily dwellers to use. Under the multifamily standards, the applicant would have to provide a minimum of two thousand square feet. So you can see, having that reduced buffer here allows the applicant to provide a greater amount of common open space with the development. The landscape plan you see here is consistent with the multifamilies and the UDC, as well as the parking lot. Items of discussion really at the commission hearing, or at least in my staff report, were, we were wanting to nail down the building elevations for you. The ones that were originally in the staff report did not comply with the design standards in the UDC or the multifamily standards. During the public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant actually revised their elevations, and these were the actual elevations that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved, with one modification. On the rear elevations, you can see here, the applicant's designed the canopy to be actually connected to the rear facade. The original elevations had that canopy cannibalized or extended from the rear elevation, approximately eight feet. Staff liked that architectural detail, and so in the, in our conditions of approval tonight, we are recommending, or a condition of approval in the staff report requires that rear canopy protrude from that elevation or that facade eight feet like it was originally proposed. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval at their April sixteenth hearing, testifying in favor was Sean Nichol, and the applicant did provide written testimony in, in agreement with the staff report at that time. There were some minor modifications that I'll touch bases on real quickly. The first items, the first changes to staff's recommendation included, again, that elevation or extension of that canopy on the rear elevation. And then because the applicant wants to build a multifamily in conjunction with recording the plat, the commission did modify condition of approval two point two point seven, which would allow the applicant to pull a building permit and get this project under construction, but the final plat would have to be recorded prior to occupancy of that first structure. So we gave him some latitude, rather than recording the plat and then get a building permit, we gave him the latitude of getting it under construction, and then they, they would have to have that final plat finalized and recorded prior to getting occupancy for any structure on the site. Staff has not received any additional testimony on this project since the Planning and Zoning Commission, nor have we heard from the applicant, but the applicant did whisper in my ear this evening, and he said he is in agreement with the conditions of approval before you this evening. With that, I'd stand for any questions you may have, and.
Questions for Bill?
I have none.
Mr. President. Bill, I'm looking at the elevations. Can, can you help me interpret which one would be visible from Pine Street, Pine Avenue?
Council President, Councilmember Aramba, absolutely. This is the elevation that would be along Pine.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. President, or, Mr. President, I think. Bill, can you show me where the, the dumpsters are located on this? I think it was at the end of the parking stalls, right up front there?
That is correct. Mr. President, Councilman Borton, you can see here that it actually come off of Idaho, and then the garbage truck could drive in, get the dumpsters, and then back on out. In our conditions of approval here, the sanitary services said they didn't need an enclosure this size, so the applicant's been conditioned just to work with them on getting an appropriately-sized trash enclosure on this property in order to serve this. So I imagine that area will be shrinking as they move through the process with us.
It will be what?
Will, it'll actually be shrinking. They don't need an enclosure that size. They don't need two dumpsters there.
Is it required to be screened? Can you, you will be able to see the dumpsters from Idaho?
Mr. President, Councilman Borton, you'll, it'll have to be gated, solid gates, and yes, it'll have to be screened from view.
Further questions? Bill, I have a couple. On Pine, and I'm looking at the landscape, escape plan, folks and kids being what they are, they're going to want to get to Pine. And I don't see in there any pathway or any way for folks to get to that sidewalk. Is that in there somewhere, or?
Mr. President, there is a condition in the staff report that requires one of these sidewalks to extend to Pine.
Okay.
So the applicant will work with staff through the design review process to make one of those connections.
The, the other question relates to the way it's subdivided. Do we have Lot One with the building on it and, and a parking lot, and we have Lot Two? If at some point in time in the future, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, but it could, the property's split, and the owner of Lot One, also the owner of the parking lot decides, I don't care about Lot Two, I don't own that, I'm not going to let anybody park in my parking lot. Is there a condominium arrangement for the parking lot for those two buildings? Because I can see that happening.
Mr. President, council members, there is a condition on the final plat, and there's a note on the plat that states that Lot Block One has an easement on it, that we're shared parking and cross-axis for the entire development.
We'll have a recorded easement.
Yes, there will be something in place to make sure that runs with the land.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Does the applicant have any comments?
I really don't have anything to add, but.
If you want to tell us something, come on up and give us your name and address. We might have a question for you, I don't know.
Mr. President, Councilmember John Renison, four ten East State Street in Eagle. I would like to thank Bill, actually, for helping us kind of articulate this plan. This is a complicated little piece of property to try to do what we're doing. Infill, this is, this is really an infill project, right? Not the previous?
No.
Right? So, so it's a skinny little piece of property, and, and we're trying to do the most with it we can, and we think we're successful. We're really excited about it, frankly. At first, the idea of consolidating the parking to the rear on Idaho came up, and, and I kind of had mixed, mixed thoughts on that, but as we developed the plan, the courtyard really came into play, and it's, it's really nice feature. And so that wasn't possible by, by having parking coming off of Pine and, and Idaho at the same time. So anyway, it resolved well. We're real excited about it, looking for your approval. The, the pathway, we actually had some stepping stones out to the, to, to, right, right there, out to Pine on, on both sides of the building. The staff report asked that we put a sidewalk in on one side, and we'll probably still do stepping stones on the other, but for the primary access, it'll, it'll be on one side, but, but the, the, the trash enclosure would be a, a solid wall, or, you know, solid, well-done steel, fence, you know, fence, if you will. And, and the trash enclosure will shrink a little bit. We're going to critique that plan a little bit. I think the architect, when he, when he kind of took a first pass at that, the, the, the public services had asked for a separate container for, for recycling and one for, for trash, so it just landed that way. So we're going to articulate a little bit more as we move to final. But really, that's, that's probably all I have to add, but other than like your approval and let us get this one built.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Justice.
In that courtyard, are there, is there an amenity? Or is it open, just open space, or?
Yeah, there's, there's actually two, the, the code requires two amenities for, even for this little tiny infill.
Okay.
But, so there's a, there's a public art feature that we're working on that's on the, yeah, that's up there, I don't know if I can, haven't used this before, but right there where the cursor is, and then there's a, a community garden on the, on the, on the south, or the, that's the east side. So the west side of public art feature, that we're still kind of working on a little bit, but, and then the, the, the east side of garden. It'd be really nice.
Other questions?
Like the bird.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, it doesn't appear that there's anybody else that wants to testify, but I have to ask anyway. Frank? Okay. Seeing, seeing none?
Move that we close the public hearing on item JRZ fifteen oh oh five KPFP fifteen oh oh two and LCUP fifteen zero zero six.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on items eight J, K, and L. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item eight J, RZ fifteen zero zero five to include staff and applicant comment.
Seconded to approve item eight J. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Aramba.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
We approve item eight K, PFP fifteen zero zero two.
Second. Seconded to approve item eight K. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Aramba.
Aye.
Mr. Borton.
We approve item eight L, CUP fifteen zero zero six.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve item eight L. Discussion? Seeing none? Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Aramba.
Aye.
Good. Thank you all. Next item, Department reports, a report from Legal Department. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I have before you a budget amendment for your consideration for fiscal year 2015, the current fiscal year that we're in. This is to move my part-time assistant attorney position to a full-time deputy position. We've had this current position for seven years, or seven years this next month with the same incumbent. We have exhausted the work completely with a part-time position, and we no longer can keep up with just a part-time position, so we've asked if we would move this to a full-time position for the remainder of this fiscal year, as well as moving forward into future fiscal years. The amount there will cover the remainder of this fiscal year for both wages and benefits. We ask for your consideration and approval.
Questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Aramba.
I move we approve the budget amendment for FY 2015 in the amount of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-nine to change your part-time assistant city attorney to full-time deputy city attorney immediately.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve item nine A. Any discussion? Bill, I, I would just make the point that I would like to see this further identified and spoken to in the budget process as, as we move this position forward.
Certainly.
So workload and that sort of thing.
We can do that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve item eight A. No discussion?
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Emily, right?
This is Andrea.
Or, I mean Andrea.
Yes.
Emily's full-time. Yeah. All right. Very good. And next department report, Police Department Chief.
Mr. President, council. The hundred deadliest days of summer are between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and because of that, the Office of Highway Safety provides us a grant every year for safety education. What the Police Department does is we use it for our spring safety fling for our high school youth. During the high school lunch hour, we provide pizza, a music DJ, and many safety messages. We've done this for the past several years. We have received a fifteen hundred dollar grant. It is currently in the city funds, and we're just requesting spending authority for the amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars.
Questions?
I have none.
Mr. President.
I just had a question for you. That's, what funds does that grant program reside in?
In the general fund for the city, and we just need to transfer it over for spending.
Where does it come from?
Office of Highway Safety.
Office of Highway Safety.
Yes.
So it comes from federal transportation?
Correct.
Okay.
Comes from the federal to the state.
To the state.
To the local, yes.
Mr. President, I have a question for you, chief. Do you have this spring safety fling at every high school?
Within the city limits, we're doing, yes.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Three of them.
At the bottom of high schools.
Does that include the, the academies, or just the large high schools?
You? You're asking the wrong person. I do not know that.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry to put you on this water.
I, I believe it does, but I'm, I'm not sure, so I don't want to commit to that completely.
Any further questions?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the FY 2015 budget amendment for spring safety fling donation to the not exceed amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve item nine B. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Aramba.
Aye.
Last item of action, ordinance ten A, ordinance fifteen dash sixteen forty-five. If the city clerk would read that by title only.
Thank you. City of Meridian, ordinance number fifteen dash one six four five and ordinance RZ fifteen dash zero zero two, Calderwood Business Park, for the rezone of a parcel of land being a portion of lots three through seventeen of Block One of Larkspur subdivision number one, and adjacent public streets located in the southwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of Section nineteen, Township three north, Range one east, Boise, Meridian, City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of LO, Limited Office Zoning District, to CG, General Retail and Service Commercial, and LO, Limited Office Zoning Districts in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard the, the ordinance read by title, does anyone wish to hear it in its entirety, seeing none?
Mr. President.